Are we good, Brendan?
We are now good to begin. Thank you.
All right. The time now is 6:35 and it is January 25, 2021. This is a hearing meeting of the Springfield City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman?
Present.
Present. Counselor Gomez?
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen?
Present.
Present. Counselor Curran?
Present.
Present. Counselor Whitfield?
Here.
Here. Counselor Ramos?
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown?
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Present. Counselor Davila?
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst?
Present.
Present. Counselor Williams?
Present.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the council and any guests please rise for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the
to the flag
of the United
United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands
this stands.
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. Just prior to calling the first item tonight, I just want to relay that for today's hearing, we will be accepting testimony by way of email, letter, or recording as we have done so in the past in the midst of COVID-19. In the near future, it is possible we could switch to folks providing live testimony and joining us by way of Zoom. But first, we need to address certain concerns around IT and proper notification methods and also discuss the feasibility of those things. So there was an email that went out alerting folks who wanted to speak tonight. So if you are on the call now, I would just ask that you please leave at this time and submit your testimony by way of email, letter, or recording to the city council office to read into the record at the next city council regular meeting. So I just want to mention that again. If there's anyone here who are speaking in favor or against any of the special permits or zone change tonight, I would just ask that you please leave at this time and submit your testimony by way of email, letter, or recording to the city council office so that that can be read into the record for the next city council regular meeting. All right. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item tonight?
The first item on the agenda is for a special permit to reestablish a pre-existing non-conforming use at 484 Boston Road.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak to this special permit tonight? Could you just please state your name and address for the record?
Hi. My name is Sanjay Patel. I'm one of the partner. My partner, McConie, also is on the other line. S.A.N.J.A.Y. P. Patel.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Patel. And would you like to describe the project at all?
Sure. Sure. As you might know, it's old Bartera building. It's been closed for last four and a half years, I believe. I just purchased this last year and I wanted to put something similar and make it work. I have a few businesses on the Boston Road and I always thought that that property can be, if properly handled, it can be a good, good business investment. And that was the purpose for me to invest in the property. And my partner, McConie, he owns roll-in, roll-out down the road, right across from the U-Haul. McConie, can you give me the address that you own there right now? Can you hear me, McConie? You have to unmute yourself first. Anyway, he owns a, he's renting a place right next to Napa, right on a Boston Road, and it's a small facility for him. And he wants to increase his business and he needs bigger place. So we join hands and we're going together and we're gonna make this property work. We're gonna be doing a car sale, car repair, tire service, and regular car mechanic place. We want to invest some money to mostly cosmetic and make this property work. And that is the purpose we applied for a special permit. And actually, we are, we are doing the same stuff what the previous owner were doing. They were selling their car and doing mechanical work. So our idea of using the property for the same reason.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Patel. I just want to remind the council and the guests that typically proponents would have, you know, 20 minutes to speak in favor as well as in opposition to the special permit. Again, as mentioned for tonight, we're accepting testimony in the ways that I mentioned. And then we will then open the floor to the council for any questions, comments, or discussion. Following the discussion, items will be continued to the next regular city council meeting, at which time we will hear any remaining testimony from the petitioner and those who wish to rebut any testimony provided this evening. Just wanted to give you that heads up. So Madam Clerk, can I just ask, have we received any testimony for those wishing to speak in favor of this special permit?
We have not.
All right. Seeing none, have we had anyone willing to speak in opposition of the special permit by submitted testimony?
We have not.
All right. Seeing none. Are there any questions for the petitioner from members of the council? Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the petitioners for joining us. And I just wanted to check in and see if the petitioners had had a chance to check in with any of the neighborhood councils in the immediate area.
Yes, we have. Matt, they came personally. They checked the property and they were very happy that we are coming in and making this ISO property make it work.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Are there any other comments or questions for the petitioner from the city council? Again, I'll ask one more time. Are there any other questions from the council at this time? Counselor Davila?
No, go ahead. I'll defer to Counselor Davila. I had one more question if there weren't any other, but I'll defer yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a quick question. Mr. Patel, it's exciting to see that the development happening and bringing that property back to life. How many cars are you envisioning to have over there for sale?
Right. I mean, right now, we're gonna start slowly. The parking, we have 200 car parking right now. And we're gonna start with like 10 car for sale at the beginning. And probably behind 50 parking, we're gonna use it for mechanical work. And hopefully down the road, if we are succeeded, we would like to put more car for sale as we, because it's some kind of more investment and we're gonna put as we go.
Yeah, maybe, Mr. President, to Phil, another Phil's on the line. Are we putting any kind of restriction in the amount of cars available or are we going with 200?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't suggest a number. The lot is, is, you know, a pretty good-sized lot, so they have more than enough room for the vehicles. So I really wasn't too concerned with the amount of vehicles due to the size of the property.
All right. Thank you, Phil. Mr. Patel, where are you intending to store the vehicles that are going to be worked on?
We have a 7,000 square feet of just a garage area with a two-big-door garage where we can put in and out. And because it was Bartera, they were designed pretty good with the exhaust system. We have everything all electrical in the place. So it was, the whole garage was purposely for that reason. So we were lucked out with those kind of benefit. They got oil separator. They got a lot of good thing that they should have it. And we have, I would say about, we can work at the same time, we can work like seven times two, so 14 car inside under the roof without, yeah, without any temperature or, yeah, with a covered, covered roof.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Letterman, I wanted to circle back with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Patel, I just had one more question and maybe Phil could chime in as well. I saw there was a specific condition on the previous special permit that Phil references relative to the discontinuance of a budding street, which wasn't ever developed. And I was wondering if some clarification, Phil, could just be provided. It says that that was actually done under the previous petitioner, but that it needs to remain on this permit. Is that, can you help us understand that a little better?
Yeah, I'm trying to look at my map here. I think it's Hobson Street, which is a paper street. Paper street which goes between the building and the kind of the adjacent lot that the, that the this use was expanded to. And at the time that they were expanding to those other two lots, we had asked that that portion of Hobson, Hobson Street be legally discontinued. Again, it is a paper street and they're currently using it for parking. So I did check with the Department of Public Works. The street was legally discontinued, but the A&R Plan, which would incorporate that section of Hobson Street into their overall property, was never done. So an A&R Plan just needs to be completed and recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So this portion of Hobson Street, which they're using, becomes part of their parcel and ultimately they, you know, to just confirm legal ownership of that.
I understand. That makes sense. And so is that condition already listed on the draft permit?
Yes. Well, I think what I did was change it was not to, not legally discontinue, but just to complete the A&R Plan that gets recorded, that gets submitted to the Office of Planning and the Planning Board, and then ultimately recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
It looks like that's condition number 11. So I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Patel and his representatives understand the process.
In the analysis, I, you know, there, there was a plan that was done. It just was never signed
Sure.
and recorded. So it's a pretty simple stuff.
All right. Mr. Patel, you're all set with that?
Yes, I was aware that they have a, the, the street, the, the street was given to them. And I was unaware that it was not registered to the deed, which I will happy to do that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Are there any other questions or comments from other counselors? Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. At this time, I'll need a counselor to entertain a motion to continue.
So moved, Mr. President?
All right. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Mr. President.
All right. The motion has been made by Counselor Gomez and seconded by Counselor Letterman. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on continuing?
On the motion to continue, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes. Motion to continue has been accepted. This item will be continued to our next regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the second item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a special permit to allow for the installation of a wall sign at 151 Chestnut Street.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak to this special permit?
That's me, Joy Martin.
Hi, Joy. Feel free. Can you please state your name and ask for the record, please?
Oh, Joy Martin.
An address?
Oh, I'm sorry. The address for the project's 151 Chestnut Street, Springfield, Mass.
Appreciate it. Feel free.
Um, Harry, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, Harry Auerbach, Agnoli Sign. We are working with Joy and the Davenport Companies. We are located at 722 Worthington Street.
Um, do you want to explain the sign to him? Because you can do better with the dimensions and how it goes.
Yeah. Thank you to the city council for hearing, hearing from us today. We are here because there are two signs that are above the second, above the first floor level. I believe that information's in their packet that provided by Phil. And being such that they are above the first floor, we are requesting a special permit for these two signs. They are going to be perpendicular to Chestnut Street on the, if you will, the south wall of the building. What's really interesting is that Joy and the Davenport Companies have secured this sign. It's a vintage sign. And we're using the, the faces making a new, new body for it and affixing it to the building. And again, once, because it is above the first floor, we are seeking permission to, for a special permit.
Thank you, Mr. Auerbach. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly, and if I didn't, I apologize.
Mr. Williams, that's fine. It's, it's Auerbach. You know, Harry. That works. Neglected to, I'm sorry, Joy, go ahead.
No, the installation of this sign will just be the finishing touch on the conversion of the historic, of that historic building into Overland Lofts. And like Harry said, we, well, I spent all Saturday bidding on it months ago. He added to living here. And it's being restored and it's been approved by the Mass Historical Commission. It's also been approved by the Springfield Historic Commission. And it's just subject to the special permit because of its location on the building.
And I neglected to say that it's an illuminated sign. And we are, there'll be neon like the, it's like it was originally intended to have. And it is, it is a, for lack of a better adjective, it's a really cool sign. I mean, it's and, and Joy, correct me if I'm wrong, this location is a former Overland building where, where actually vehicles were sold.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Before we get into the testimony from the Madam Clerk, Counselor Fenton, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So sign is terrific. Just a question. Nope. Will the sign blink in any regard? Harry, I would be opposed.
To answer, no, it will not blink. It is, it is, when it's on, it is fully lit.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, have we received any testimony for those in favor of this special permit?
We have not.
All right. And have we received any testimony in opposition to the special permit?
We have not.
All right. Seeing none. Are there any additional questions for the petitioner from the city council, members of the city council? Again, I will ask, are there any additional comments or questions from members of the city council? All right. Seeing none. Can we please, I have a counselor entertain a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
Second.
All right. And seconded by Counselor Whitfield. The motion was made by by Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on continuing?
I'm sorry, I missed who made the motion. Which Counselor?
Sure. Counselor Fenton made it originally and Counselor Whitfield seconded.
Okay, thank you. On the motion to continue the item, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez? Counselor Gomez? Absent. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes. Special, the continuance of the special permit has been accepted. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is to amend an existing special permit for 311 Page Boulevard.
Thank you. Is there anyone here present to speak to this amendment to the special permit? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, my name is Tim Rook and I live at 63 Woodcrest Road in Springfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Mr. Rook. Would you also like to speak to the special permit or the amendment, I should say?
Yes.
Feel free to at this time.
Sure. Mr. President, fellow city councilors, we're here this evening to amend a special permit. The only two amendments that are being discussed or asked for permission is for a change of ownership between myself and my new partner, John Gallagher, as well as a percentage of ownership that will be changed. Mr. Gallagher will own 51% and I will own 49%. The reason for that change is because Mr. Gallagher is fully funding the operation for the renovations and opening of the facility.
All right. Thank you, former city counselor, Tim Rook. Madam Clerk, have we received any testimony for those in favor of this amendment?
We have not.
And I'll ask the same for those in opposition to this?
We have not received any testimony. I saw emails from the committee that approved this the first time, the first round of host community agreement, and no one had any issues with it.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions for the petitioner from members of the council at this time? Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Council President, and welcome back to the chambers, so to speak. Counselor Rook, I'm just curious about the change of ownership, hoping that it's a, a better situation for you and if that's perhaps why there's the change.
It absolutely is. Makes more sense and it's vital. The change is vital for the project to move forward.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Rook, good to see you. And like Counselor Walsh says, welcome to the chambers, back to the chambers, if not virtually. Question, when do we expect for this to be up and running? Altogether?
Well, at the, at, at the current moment, we're waiting for the final step of the city council this evening. But as far as the Cannabis Control Commission is concerned, there are three phases for the allowance to open a dispensary. The first step is that your application is deemed complete, which ours is deemed complete. The second phase is a provisional license stage. And the state has up to 90 days to approve your permit for that second phase. We are about 30 days into the full 90. And once we have that completed, we go into the final stage. So if the Cannabis Control Commission continues with its usual pace of business, we would expect to be open by July of this year, July of 2021. If we can be open sooner, we will. We are ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Rook. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions or comments from the city, members of the city council at this time? All right. Seeing no other questions or comments at this time, will there be a counselor to entertain making the motion to amend the existing special permit?
Of course.
Second.
Letterman?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Counselor Letterman?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whitfield. All right. So Madam Clerk, did you get that?
I did. Was the motion made by Counselor Letterman and seconded by Counselor Whitfield?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Perfect. So at this time, can we please take a roll call to accept the amendments?
On, are we, I'm sorry, I missed that. Are we accepting the amendments or are we continuing?
Accepting the amendments.
Okay. On accepting the amendments, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Abstaining?
Abstaining? Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
All right. The amendment to the
Counselor, I actually have a quick question. I'm sorry.
Sure, ma'am. Shut up. Sure.
If we're amending a special permit, there still should be, testimony should still be allowed. So I believe it should be continued.
Okay. I had asked Madam Clerk for that particular, particular item, if we needed to vote or it was continuing the best option. So the last I heard was that it did not matter. So I just wanted to, do it's your thought that we should continue until
But if you have other information, it's fine. I'm, I'm sorry.
Counselor Rook, can I, can I just ask, or former city counselor, what can I just ask? Will that, continuing this into the next regular meeting on Monday, I believe is the next regular meeting, will that affect the project at all?
If we could request that we be allowed to bypass that waiting period, it would be extremely helpful. We have a meeting with the architect, the engineer, and the landlord scheduled for this week. And we want to get moving. Honestly, we want to start construction by the end of the week if we can.
Thank you, Attorney Moore.
Yeah, and I respect Counsel Rook's perspective. Certainly, I think I would echo the sentiments of the clerk. You know, it's, it's a hearing looking to amend the permit, like all the hearings we've been doing. I think it has to have the bifurcated nature because of our Zoom. Certainly, the council, and I am very used to as well, just kind of taking these and acting when we know that there hasn't been any testimony like there was this evening other than the petitioner. So I think it makes sense to just handle like we've been handling it and have this go forward for the vote at the next hearing in case there is public here information that people who watch this, you know, would like to weigh in on.
Yeah. And just as a point of reference, I appreciate that Attorney Moore, Counselor, former Counselor Rook. Just as we've been doing with the other special permits, we give folks or like to give folks, members of the public to watch this particular meeting tonight and then come back for an opportunity to rebut any information that was stated in the next regular meeting. So if, you know, if you could be amenable to that just for a few more days to allow for that, that would be ideal.
And what would the process be present for that? How does that work? Or do we come back before the city council?
Yes, you would come back for the city council, ideally, you know, if, if it voted up one more time. Just to, again, offer any other testimony to be read into the record after that, for that period. Yes.
And we have had two public hearings with the neighborhood. We had one onsite. We had one with a Zoom. We've met with the neighborhood city, neighborhood council. We've met with the neighbors and we've met with some of the industrial tenants. And none of them that we have been in contact with have been opposed to the project at all. As a matter of fact, it's just the opposite. They're wondering when we're going to start, get things going. So again, if it, if it could be bypassed, we would appreciate it.
I see Counselor's hands raised, so I'll just go to Counselor Ramos.
Mr. President, thank you. If we follow the, the vote that we just took, there was a motion to accept these amendments and we have approved that. And so if we are now going to discuss continuing this item, I would, I would have I would, I would have, I, I, I think we need to hear from either Attorney Moore or Madam Clerk as to what process we would have to take. Do we have to rescind our vote that we just took to approve? Or is there another motion that we have to take in order to continue the item?
I would defer to Attorney Moore on that.
Sure, I, I'll allow Madam Clerk to just double check me here, but I think you'd need to entertain a motion and councillor, you're exactly right, for, you need to be doing a reconsideration. You know, I think that's probably the, the vote is reconsideration and then the council essentially does a reconsideration vote to do a continuance instead of an approval in this case. Madam Clerk would probably have to back me up by looking up the rule just to see exactly what type of motion. I know it depends on the, if you're, you know, if you're looking to do this after you've closed the meeting and it's a new meeting, it becomes a different motion as opposed to if you're doing it within the meeting itself that you just took the vote. So again, you know, I'll defer to Madam Clerk as to what specific motion you guys would need to do, but it's a good point.
Attorney Moore is correct. It would be a motion to reconsider the amendment for a vote to continue.
Every once in a while, I get those right.
Councillor Allen?
The only reason I raised my hand was not to comment on the legal part we're just discussing, but I think you referred to our next meeting being this coming Monday. It would normally be the first Monday of February, but it is not. It's the second Monday, I believe, February 8th. So just want everybody to have that information.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Councillor Davila? Councillor Davila, you're muted.
Sorry. Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to speak to the same issue that Councillor Allen just spoke to. The next meeting is going to be in two weeks, so the 8th, and that's going to be a regular meeting. The next hearing meeting is going to be on the 22nd. So either way, I think a former councillor will just say that he's a better on a timetable. So I don't know what the two-week window will do to the project, but I do fear if I make a, may make a suggestion, Mr. President, that if this creates a hardship for former city councillor Rook and his partner to move forward with this, that perhaps we can schedule a meeting, special meeting in between, just with this agenda to get it disposed of. And if, if a councillor, former councillor Rook has a thought on it, I would love to hear it.
Thank you, Councillor Davila. Councillor Rook, did you want to speak to that?
I, I, if you could repeat the reply, I'd be happy to. I couldn't hear it. There were some cars going by.
Sure. What I was saying was that the next meeting will be in two weeks and the next hearing meeting will be in a month, give or take. And I was just suggesting to the council president that if that creates some sort of a hardship in waiting those two weeks or that four weeks, if we could schedule a meeting, a special meeting in between to dispose of this matter. So I don't know if this would create a hardship for you or not to move forward.
We, we would be grateful for the special meeting. If it's, if it's unlikely that we will get the approval tonight, we would appreciate this special meeting.
Yeah, if I may suggest, within your wisdom, Mr. President, just to dispose of that because I like councillor, like I believe Attorney Moore just said or one of somebody just said, former councillor Rook has already been approved and he has the host agreement and we really need to get this project up and going, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Davila for the recommendation. Councillor Walsh, did you have a comment?
On music, I think it's very important as we deal with these new businesses coming into, to the city that our policy is uniform, that we do the same for all proponents, especially in this situation where we're dealing with a, with a former colleague. I think it's, we've got to be above board and do the same thing for councillor Rook's business that we would do for everybody else's business. And I think it has to be voted on at our next hearings night.
Thank you, Councillor Walsh. Point well taken and I am at this point certainly more inclined to follow the, the steps we've been taking for the other special permits. So, Madam Clerk, could you please?
Can I speak? Because I put...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, councillor. Yes, please, Councillor Rook, please.
Thank you very much. So I just wanted to know, councillor Moore, I mean Attorney Moore, what are the ramifications of approving the amendment tonight? Like would something bad happen? Is it illegal? What's, what's the ramifications?
Okay, let me think for a moment how far into this I want to get because this is a public meeting and, you know, normally we'd be looking at...
The tip of the iceberg, tip of the iceberg.
Well, I, I think I say that just to be, just to be clear because, you know, usually when you're giving advice in, in the context that you could have a litigation, then you'd be going to executive session. So, you know, what I would say is, you know, there's a procedure that we've been forced into because of COVID and it's this bifurcated hearing procedure and we've done a lot of these, you know, hearings for either special permits or amendments to special permits or what have you. And that's, my recommendation is we just follow that procedure and we continue with that because it's what we've set for ourselves. And once, once we start changing our own rules is when we start to get into the gray areas that we probably don't want to be. That would be my advice in the public meeting sense. But if we wanted to go into executive session, I could just very quickly go over it, but I'd rather, I'd rather do it there than do it here.
Gotcha. Thank you. I have another question for Phil. So we, so we had hearings, meetings with former councillor Rook in the past and we went through the procedure, we went through everything. I didn't, I didn't know that change in ownership even had to come back to the city council for an amendment request and a permit. So can you just explain that or?
Well, it was, it was, it was the determination that under the existing special...
You muted by mistake though.
All right. I was just trying to find the original. They're, they're under condition number one, it specifically talks about the special permit is granted to the petitioner only and shall not be reassigned or transferred. So I, it was a determination by the law department due to the fact that the ownership is changing that that was considered a reassignment slash transfer. So that was the reason it was determined it needed to come back for an amendment to the special permit.
Okay, thank you very much. I was just, you know, a little bit wanting to get the amendment approved because we already went through this hearings process with Mr. Rook and, I mean, I go with the consensus and I go with what the president, you know, says, but we went through this process and it's holding up a lot of jobs and economic development to the city. And so I just wanted to point that out, but if, you know, sending this or rescinding our decision is what needs to be done, I would concur with Councillor Davila and ask that we do hold a special meeting.
Thank you, Councillor Whitfield. Are there any other councillors? I think I see is councillor Allen, did you have a comment left?
Yeah, yes, I did. And it is that the way we've been doing this is we do what we did tonight on, in the hearings night and wait for the feedback. And then we don't wait till the next hearings night. Councillor Davila was talking about either a two-week wait or a four-week wait. I believe it's a two-week wait because we've been taking these up in regular meetings in the next regular meeting, which would just be two weeks from tonight. That's the way I see it, to be consistent in what, what we've been doing, unless we vote a different thing. But I don't think there's a four-week wait. I think it would be just a two-week wait.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. President. And perhaps I can clear this up. So when I said so moved, I presumed that we were making the motions that we've been making for the last applicants to continue our, our process. So if I misunderstood you when you asked for the motion, my apologies. Certainly that's a, can occur with these virtual meetings, but I, I agree with, with councillor Walsh. We certainly need to ensure that we are following our legal guidance and also setting the same precedent for each permit. So I'm not sure what we do exactly in terms of the process to make it right, but I would, you know, yield to our, our legal counsel on ensuring that we are able to follow the exact same process with this permit that we have with previous permits.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Letterman. Mad... I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Rook, yes.
I, I would, we have no problem waiting two weeks and following the rules and regulations for everybody else.
Okay. Oh, all right. So in, in that case, Madam Clerk, can you please restate the reconsideration motion that would need to take place to undo the last vote?
So I'd need a motion to reconsider the motion to amend for and change it to a motion to continue.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion made by councillor Davila and seconded by perhaps councillor Whitfield?
Sure.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on that?
On the motion to reconsider, councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gomez? Councillor Gomez? Absent, councillor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Fenton? I'm abstained. I'm sorry. I apologize. Abstained, councillor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Williams?
Yes. Right. Motion to continue is approved. Madam Clerk, does that dispose of this item?
Yes.
Wait, that was a motion to rescind. I mean, wait, reverse what we did?
It was a, it was a motion to reconsider, to change the amendment, the motion to amend to a motion to continue.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor. Madam Clerk, can you please then call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a special permit for the reuse of an existing structure at 53 Wilbraham Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak to this special permit? If so, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, President Williams and city councillors, good evening. My name is Gordon Pulsifer. I'm with First Resource Development Company, 2001 Washington Street, Hanover, Mass. I am here this evening to request two special permits. Can I ask if we can take these two agenda items at the same time since they, the buildings work together?
Madam Clerk, can you please give an opinion on that? I, I, I believe they are, I know they are part of the same structure, I believe, but are illustrated on our agenda as two separate special permit items.
He can speak on both items together, but the votes need to be separate.
I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Two weeks ago, we were here in front of the council talking about a parking lot to go with Knox Residences 2. You may recall, we started a brief overview, but let me start from the beginning. We're asking for two special permits to convert two buildings into residential apartments. In a way of a little bit of background, we've been across the street for many years working at Indian Motorcycle, which we have just completed and we're real excited on how that came out. And three years ago, the Knox Automobile Building was put on a list in Boston of endangered buildings to be lost. Well, it got the attention of not only people in Boston, but it also got the attention of some of the leaders in the city of Springfield. And last year, when we were doing a groundbreaking, the governor and the lieutenant governor showed up and they had specific questions about the Knox building. It draws many people's attention because of the, the, the condition it's in. And then when you ask what its history is, you quickly become, wow, we need to save this building. This, this is the Knox Automobile Factory. The first gas-powered engines were made here. The first fire truck was made here. In fact, the Mason Square Firehouse, which we just completed at Indian Motorcycle, the first fire truck that was made there went in this firehouse. The Knox Automobile Company distributed fire engines to the entire country. I know it sat here for a long time, but I didn't even know this history. And it, it's, it's one of the buildings I think the city had slated to come down. It's one of the first buildings I've worked on or one of the second building that has its own book. And so I, I quickly became familiar, read the book and I said, oh my, we need to do something here. So it's a challenged site. We've gained site control over several parcels in order to solve the parking requirements and we've had our architects and engineers in there the last six months drawing the plans. We think we have a development plan that'll work. And what's really turned some excitement on here is the city building a new park at the end of the street. Can't help but reflect back on what we accomplished as a group at Outing Park in the South End in Springfield with that park and all those buildings that we renovated. This feels an awful lot like that. And so Knox Residences 1 and Knox Residences 2 is one building. We've divided it into two. It is separated by cement structure, but we've divided into two because the state caps and the funding requires us to separate the two buildings because we run into their caps. There's a lot of costs involved here. As many of you've probably seen in, in, in the permit we filed, the buildings are in really bad condition. They've never been boarded up and the water just runs right through the roof and it's been that way for years. We've had our structural engineers in there and we, we think we can save the building. So the special permit asked that you approve in Knox 1, which is 53 Wilbraham Road, 55 apartments, residential apartments, 36 one-bedrooms, 19 two-bedrooms. And over Knox Residences 2, 41 apartments, 26 one-bedrooms and 15 two-bedrooms. The parking at Knox Residences 1 will include 75 parking spaces. The requirement is 64 and a half parking spaces. We'll have enough, more than enough to cover. And at Knox Residences 2, we will need 48 and a half parking spaces. We have enough for 56. Parking is included across Waltham Ave and also onsite. Also onsite, for Knox Residences 1, we plan to build a maintenance office with an office for our manager, which we're trying to replicate as close as we can to the original depot building. I sent around earlier today, hopefully you got it, a, a, a pitch of postcard of the Knox Automobile Building showing the depot in, in front of it. And that's where the train used to pull up. It would go through Indian Motorcycle, pick up motorcycles, go over to Knox, pick up fire trucks and continue on. So we are hoping to replicate to a certain degree that depot building as our office. And so that would be, we'd have onsite managers. We'd have cameras throughout the property like we do at Indian Motorcycle. On Waltham Ave, we will be putting sidewalks, trees, streetlights and work our way down the street. Right now, none of that exists. And we're going to be having one-way traffic into the site and then one way out. So they'll come in off of Wilbraham Road and, and go out Waltham Ave. I think that's about covers our, our requests this evening. More than happy to take any questions on either special permit.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Before we get to the councillors, Madam Clerk, have we received any testimony speaking in favor? have we received any testimony, uh, speaking in favor of this special permit?
We have not.
And I will ask the same if we've received any testimony for those in opposition to the special permit.
So the testimony that I have begins by stating, um, the individual is not saying they're not in favor, but they're not saying they're for it either. Um, did you want me to just read the testimony that I have?
Please, Madam, yes.
This is from Adrian Osborne and it states, "Good afternoon, Mr. Williams. This is Adrian Osborne, Upper Hill's Residence Council. We've met before. Can you call me today regarding the public meeting and tomorrow, tomorrow evening at six-thirty with building purchase in Upper Hill? I'd be included in this meeting. Our council was not included in any of these discussions regarding this project. There wasn't a courtesy given to bond as to the impact it may have had." She also preface that by stating she's not necessarily against, but wants due diligence performed.
All right. Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. At this time, I will take any questions or comments from the council. Uh, I will have Counselor Whitfield followed by Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Gordon, you know that I appreciate all the work that you're doing in this area. Fire station is coming along great. Motorcycle building looks wonderful. And I thank you for any help and assistance and, um, camera use, um, that you have on your building that is requested. Um, however, for this particular special permit, I just wanted to say that I had got the same feedback that the neighborhood council was not contacted at any time to discuss, um, the plans and to give feedback or ask any questions. Um, also, I've been contacted by numerous individuals that wanted to, um, speak today and in opposition or um, in opposition, it, it was in opposition of the special permit because meetings weren't held for the community. And one thing that I see that is flawed with written testimony, call in city council office and things like that, is there's no rebuttal period. And so the five minutes that they usually get after the twenty minutes, they cannot do that in this instance. And so I think that that flaws, um, what we have been doing in the past, and I think that that needs to be considered. Now, I, I am not against this project, but I do have to listen to the constituents of the community. And I think that it would have been a great, um, gesture to reach out to the community, um, the neighborhood council, the Upper Hill, and maybe include the Old Hill Neighborhood Council and, um, talk to them about the plan. Um, so I do have a, a question for Attorney Moore. Um, I know that we're in the hearings portion of this meeting, Attorney Moore. And so any outside discussion at this point, um, with the neighborhood council, it cannot be done. Um, any discussion with the community, can that be done? I'm not really sure how that works.
Yes, I think you're referring to, uh, whether, uh, Mr. Pulsifer or the developer would be able to go do that? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's totally appropriate. I, I think there, there have been some instances in the past where, um, councilors have recommended that, that outreach occur if it hadn't been done already. Um, obviously, if there's been some opposition or, or the, you know, the council's aware of some opposition that's been received, it seems like it would make good sense in between the hearings for, you know, the developer to go have those meetings. Then, you know, the, the second part of the hearing could take place where you're still taking in evidence and you can really see whether there is still continued opposition for those concerns that were expressed kind of previously. So I think you could do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know, um, how that works. So, yes, Mr. Pulsifer?
I have spoken, um, to the Old Hill Association, Barbara, uh, at length, given her information. I have tried to contact Adrian Osborne, um, and we've been unable to speak. Um, so it's, it's not that we're ignoring, uh, it, by the way, it is a little concern, confusing because our project sits sort of on the edge of both neighborhood associations.
Yeah.
So, so we're trying to work with both and, and we're in hopes to have a joint Zoom call. Um, and, but we've been reaching out. We've been talking at length with the Old Hill Association. And we described the whole project and, uh, from what I understand, uh, they're in favor of it, but I'm more than happy to meet, answer, discuss anything about, um, either one of these special permits.
Okay, thank you. Also, um, I know my time is about to be limited with the new rule, but, um, I just wanted to ask you about the parcels you said you obtained. Um, can you speak for the parking lot? Can you speak a little bit more to that?
Certainly. Um, thirty-four Wilbraham Ave, forty-two Wilbraham Ave, forty-eight Wilbraham Ave. Um, they're just across the street from, uh, Knox One and Two. And then the city, uh, parking lot at the end of Waltham Ave, which we talked about two weeks ago. Uh, that, um, was approved to be sold, uh, to Knox Residences Two.
So are those, um, residences that you just mentioned, are they residential? Does people live there? And?
I, um, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I have per, I'm, I have a purchase and sale with the owner who will deliver them empty at, um, the end of the year.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm still, I'm just gonna basically address, um, I know some of, there was concerns with, uh, some of the councils as far as, uh, Gordon, um, coming out and meeting. I know it's a little difficult with the Upper Hill. Um, I've reached out with, uh, reached out to Gordon and, um, I've talked to Barbara and I've talked to State Rep Bill Williams. So we plan on having a meet and, um, you know, scheduling the meet and, um, and uh, Gordon said he's all for a meeting. Um, so, um, you know, it's been kind of difficult. I know what we are because some of the actual councils, they don't meet regularly. Um, so it's difficult to get a hold of them. And as far as it's still, some of them are getting some of the information sent to them as far as what's getting on the agenda and things like that. But, um, I, um, I made sure that I reached out to, uh, Gordon and, and, uh, me and the, the rep and the, uh, and I've spoken with Barbara. So we do plan on meeting with Gordon, um, very, very soon, going over everything, um. Yeah, because everyone is excited. They kind of want to see what's going on. Um, that's basically all it is. You know, it's a common courtesy. Um, I also want to thank you, Gordon, for the camera that did catch the, uh, person who burned down that MLK, um, plant, uh, church. So, uh, thank you for all your effort, um, in making our area safe. Um, but, um, I'll, I'll be in touch with you, um, at some point, maybe tomorrow, I'll have Barbara reach out, but, um, he, we are gonna meet, everyone's gonna meet and, uh, figure out exactly, uh, what they just want to see. They're excited. They want to know what's going on.
Perfect. I look forward to that, Counselor Brown.
And, and one more thing, Gordon, I, I have, um, a list of, uh, a lot of contractors, minority contractors are interested in getting some type of, uh, s- some type of bid consideration. Where, where should I send them for that?
I will send you the address. Um, it's, uh, Northeast Interiors. They're the general contract.
Okay. Are we looking, are they favoring on any of the minorities or is it a little favoring toward a little bit more to minorities?
Well, um, at Indian Motorcycle, we were able, um, to capture forty percent level, forty to forty-two percent minority workers and companies. And we were also able to capture more than fifty percent of local companies. So we, we were real excited about that and, and, um, you know, we want to use the local community as much as we can. It's easier for the general contractor than to bring people from out of town.
Thank you, Gordon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Letterman?
I'll yield to, uh, Vice President, Mr. President.
All right, um, Madam Whit, uh, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just have a comment because I want to just be clear that when we are in these public hearings, we don't seem to be working on behalf of the, um, the permit, the person who's pulling the special permit. Um, the holding the meetings and all that needs to be, um, scheduled with them in the old neighborhood council. And we, this is a hearing, so we can't take sides or do that work or do anything, uh, for them. We have to have it fair and neutral so we can hear everybody, including the community. And so I just want to make sure that we're being careful when we say we're doing this and we're doing that. And, Mr. Pulsifer, if you could send all of us the information that you sent to Counselor Brown, that would be helpful. And so that we're not left out of the loop, um, on certain things, um, that would be helpful. But I just wanted to make sure that we are clear that we are not taking sides. This is a hearings meeting and we are not working on behalf of anybody, um, here. And so I, I just want to say that.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Dabila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I do believe Counselor, uh, Letterman was before me, but, um.
I'm sorry, Counselor Letterman, yes.
So all right, Mr. President, going with the flow this evening. Uh, but tha- thank you very much, Mr. President and Counselor Dabila. Um, you know, let me start by saying, uh, certainly the, the development of this parcel, uh, will be a, a huge game changer. Um, I think that, you know, we are really seeing quite a bit of investment, um, in the Mason Square area right now, which is something, uh, really long overdue. And so we appreciate the contributions, Mr. Pulsifer, that, that you've already made and also, um, really what's activating around those sites as well. If we look, uh, at the new Level Five Restaurant right across the street, uh, the new, uh, not the new, but there has been more development at the Plaza across the street as well. And so I think that having, uh, such a lively, uh, now, new housing, uh, development will be very important and will drive, you know, further economic development in that, in that area. Um, you know, these are buildings that, that I've been driving by, you know, since I was a kid that have been abandoned. And so to see them, uh, really coming back to their former glory and in such service to the community, I think is very important. I just had a couple of questions, uh, relative to the, the project development. I was wondering if first you might be able to share with us, Mr. Pulsifer, a little bit, uh, more about the, uh, two different buildings, the housing that'll be developed there. Are there going to be any additional amenities, uh, other than just the apartments for the individuals that live there?
We will have a, uh, community room in the new office being built and we'll have, uh, laundry on, on the floors. And as far as additional space, Counselor Letterman, it's, it's really tight in these buildings. Um, as you can see, they're very narrow. And to get two elevators, uh, in each and, uh, laundry on each floor, um, it creates a very tight situation, but we, we do have a management office there with a community room, uh, to service the residents, um, which I think is very important. Um, it, to, to, to leave a building unattended, no assistance to your residents, just not a good formula. And we have, um, five offices in Springfield now, um, all in, in separate neighborhoods and it works when, when management's there to assist. And, um, the cameras being, I mean, the cameras to manage just the camera systems we have at these properties is i- i- is a lot of work too. Anyway, so I hope I answered your question.
You did. And I, it's a good segue into my next question, which was relative to, uh, your onsite management and, uh, security. Um, I know, you know, you're very experienced in, in this, have many properties across the city, but just relative to this piece, could you talk a little bit about what the security will look like for the residents in the area?
Certainly. Um, the first and, and most important part of security is lighting. And, and, um, that's one of the things that we try to excel at because without lighting, cameras won't work and, and, and safety doesn't happen. Um, and, and so the security will include lighting. It will also include a video intercom system, which when, when someone, too many times, people go up to intercoms at buildings and start pushing buttons and people just buzz people in. And they don't even know who they're buzzing in. We have a video in every apartment. So when someone rings your doorbell, up comes the face of the person who's ringing the buzzer. So, um, we always encourage our residents not to buzz people in unless they absolutely know them. And because once people get in hallways and, you know, bad things can happen. And so that's one of our, been one of our key, um, security, uh, devices. The, the last thing is the cameras. And, um, we, um, put in extensive camera system. Every inch of every common area will be covered, um, as well as the outside. And one of the things we've been doing, uh, at Indian Motorcycle is pointing cameras away from the building too. So you're getting, um, um, buildings across the street and city sidewalks across the street. And that's what allowed us to capture the person running from the, uh, burning church. Um, you know, it's one of the things since, you know, Indian Motorcycle is sort of an island in the streets all around it. You want to point away from the building as a, as, as, as in addition to pointing inside. So w- we've, um, come a long way in these security systems. And in, in fact, one of my senior people, uh, called me today and he's already working on that whole block and how many cameras are gonna need. They tested, they test angles, they, so there's no blind spots. So we, we, that will, I mean, we won't have a security guard. We, we've never needed one. Um, with the cameras, lighting and intercom systems.
Well, thank you, thank you for answering those questions. And just my final question is, what do you anticipate when completed? Uh, what do you anticipate the price point of these apartments being, uh, in the future?
Um, they will, they will be restricted rents, um, um, at FMRs below the tax credit rents. Similar, same as Indian Motorcycle.
And where, where does that fall? Can you just, for those of us that might not be as experienced in the housing industry?
Well, um, I, I can, I can tell you the one bedrooms, nine hundred a month average. Two bedrooms are between a thousand and eleven hundred.
And still, and still accessible for those with vouchers and things like that, of course.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, um, what will come with each one of these projects is, um, eight section eight certificates
Okay.
that we've applied to the state for each. And, um, we will hold a housing lottery when completed. We, we held a housing lottery at Indian Motorcycle for sixty brand-new units and we had, uh, almost seven hundred applications. And, um, so the demand is huge. Um, and the majority of those applications were from the area.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Pulsifer, for answering the questions. And I would just close out my time, uh, uh, by saying I think that, you know, we are, I'm going to be facing in the very near future, well, we're already facing, but it's going to be exacerbated in the very, very near future housing crisis. Um, rents are going to continue to rise across the state. And I think that in the western part of the state, it's not talked about as much, uh, but it is, it is going to continue. And so I think, uh, finally seeing the, the, the real investment, uh, in this magnitude, I think is very important. And I very much appreciate your presence here. One, one more thing, not necessarily, uh, related to this permit, uh, but just to echo the sentiments of some of my, my past colleagues, of course, we appreciate any efforts, uh, to make sure that we have as many local contractors on as possible. We know it makes things better for, for you. Also makes better for our entire community. So, uh, as I said, I think leveraging this, uh, with the existing community assets is going to be a, a very big improvement, uh, for those historic buildings. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Letterman. I just, uh, you know, definitely provided a little leeway there, but I still want to remind councilors that, uh, when possible to offer, uh, three separate opportunities to ask questions or provide a comment with two minutes, uh, being the, um, the time for each for a total of six. I just want folks to be mindful of that as we move forward into other meetings. Appreciate that. Uh, Counselor Dabila?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my first question, uh, is to, uh, Phil, uh, Phil, how many, how many neighborhood associations actually encompass this project?
Well, I believe it's a combination of Upper Hill and Old Hill.
And Old Hill, okay. And, Mr. Gordon, um, good evening, sir. Um, and by the way, I, I just mentioned the last hearing. Uh, I, I think this is going to be a good project. It's a very great asset to the ci- are you there, Mr. Gordon?
Yes, I am.
Okay, how are you? Uh, great assets to the city. Uh, and so again, as I said last time, my compliments to you. Um, I have to say, sir, however, that I, I, unless I'm mistaken, I was led to believe in the last meeting that you had that you had met with the associations and the uh, and they were in support of this, apparently. If I'm hearing correct, you have not. Is that correct?
I have not. I've only talked to uh uh the Old Hill Association.
Okay, so if I would, uh, I personally would love to see if you could meet with both of them, with the Upper Hill and the Old Hill, and the actual associations, not only one person, the actual association, I think, is the least we could do and uh for them, because such an important project coming to the city. So I I personally will be looking for that in the next um uh moving forward, Mr. Gordon. Uh, other than that, I think it's going to be a good project. Um, uh, I think it will be, it'll be good for for the area. Uh, Mr. President, if I may, uh, I just received a copy of a letter of support that was sent. Uh, and my understanding is that the clerk did not state that she has one.
Uh, Madam, Counselor Davila, do you have that letter of support on you?
Uh, I, it was sent to me, uh, correct, uh, but I do believe when you asked the Madam, Madam Clerk, she said she does not have it. It was addressed to her, but I know, I prefer she could look it up, she could read it if possible, sir.
All right, Madam, do you have um the letter in question that Counselor Davila is speaking to?
Not with me at the moment. Um, I saw a letter of support regarding the next item, but I did not see a letter of support for this item. Um, I could see if I can find it now. Uh, if you give me a moment.
Uh, yes, uh, it it might be related to both items. Um.
Counselor, Counselor Davila, can you read it into the record?
Yes.
It it, is that, um, okay, just to make sure that not to second.
You can read it to the record, yes.
All right, just to make sure. All right, so this letter is coming from uh Mr. Colton Andrews from the uh uh Panera Valley Building Trades Council. Uh, good evening, councilors. On behalf of the Panera Valley Building Trades Council, I would like to express our support for this project and the continued commitment to providing affordable housing to the residents of Springfield. Our hopes are that the first resort development corp- corporation stands by the commitment to not only invest in the community, but practice good community hiring standards. During these difficult times, we are steadfast in supporting the hiring and employment of Springfield residents with strong commitment to workforce diversity and inclusion during the co- construction process. We ask that the same workforce diversity standards that MGM and and CRRC were held to be the benchmark to aspire for. This project should serve as a gold standard for community partners between housing developers and the great city of Springfield. We hope uh for your continued support and and on our mission of putting local people back to work. Uh, that was submitted by Colton Andrews, President of the Panera Valley Trace uh Trade Building, excuse me, Panera Valley Building Trades Council.
Thank you, Counselor Davila.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, let me know if you need me to forward that to you, if you know, unable to locate.
Can you please? Thank you.
I definitely will. And if I may, Mr. President, just kind of my final question, in that same vein, Mr. uh Gordon, um, I do believe in the last meeting, you also say that you do intend to uh mostly people to be local hires, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just uh making sure, Mr. Gordon, just so we don't have a miscommunication.
Is that a question, Counselor Davila, or are you?
No, just making a statement to Mr. Gordon. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and you.
All right, appreciate it. Counselor Davila, Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Pulsover, um, who did you say was the general contractor on the fire station project?
Northeast Interiors.
Northeast Interiors. Is it possible to give us a breakdown as to who they use for the subcontracting uh and their, their respective addresses?
Sure.
As well as a breakdown of your percentages with respect to hiring uh over at the um, both the fire station and uh I know you did some work with the, with the motorcycle building as well. Um, that that would be great in advance of next meeting. And then the other thing is, is is more of a comment. It seems like there are going to be a number of residents who are going to be displaced when uh you, um, when the 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 owner of the properties delivers them to you vacant. I think there are a number of units in which there are currently tenants in them that uh, I guess the the owner has given them a year to find alternative housing. And and my suggestion uh might be to prioritize those individuals who might be eligible for those, for that Section Eight housing, um, when this particular project ultimately is going to be um, you know, is ultimately going to be developed uh for possibly some of those units uh in the Knox Building. Um, I know it might not benefit them for the, for the near future, as it will probably take you a while to build this. Uh, but certainly to keep those individuals in mind if they are indeed eligible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none. Um, can we please have a motion from a council to continue this item?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
All right. The original motion was made by Counselor Allen and seconded by Counselor Whitfield first. Um, can we please call the roll on continuance?
On continuing, item number four, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran. Absent, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Curran. Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes. Motion to continue has been accepted. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next agenda on the item? Next item on the agenda.
Can I also, I'm sorry, can I also have a motion to continue item number five separately, please?
So moved. Second.
Before we do that, uh, Madam Clerk, did you say that you had testimony to read for that item?
Yes, but from my understanding, um, the hearing isn't going to be opened for that item, so I will hold that testimony.
Okay, thank you.
And can I have a second for, I have the motion made by Counselor Davila. Do I have a second?
Correct.
Counselor Gomez, second. And on the motion, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes. All right, to continue, uh, item number five has been accepted. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a zone change creating and the mapping of the Main Street and Convention Overlay District.
All right, counselors, I have received correspondence that uh we are to table this item. Phil, can you please speak to that?
Uh, yes, we we, we are currently in discussions with um a couple of uh uh parties that have have concerns over the uh proposed uh amendment. So we have, we have uh between uh Tim Sheehan, the Chief Development Officer, uh, we have uh agreed to to continue this until the February twenty-second meeting in hopes that we can um have some continued conversations. We've had, we've, we've had two or three meetings already with them, but we're hoping to have a couple more, so we can come to a consensus on the, on the on the concerns that they have raised. So we're, we're hoping to get this continued and then come back to the City Council on February twenty-second.
Thank you, Phil. And just for the record, I want to be clear, this is going to be a motion to table and not a motion to continue. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's correct. The hearing isn't going to be opened yet.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table by Counselor Whitfield, seconded by Counselor Gomez.
On the motion to table, I'm sorry, Counselor. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Reluctantly, yes.
Yes, reluctantly, yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes, motion to table has been accepted. Madam Clerk, is there any other business before the City Council this evening?
There is no further business before the council.
All right, we are standard adjourned until our next regular meeting on February eighth, if I stand corrected. Thank you, Counselor Allen. I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you.